Right, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. This is notice of a council meeting. You are hereby summoned to attend a council meeting of out of town council to be held in the main hall, Hemsworth Town Council Community Centre, Wollinschaw Road, Hemsworth, commencing at 7pm on Thursday the 2nd of February 2023 for the purpose of transacting the following business. So we move to item one, apologies for absence, to receive apologies for absence and to consider and approve the reasons for absence. Item two, declarations of interest. Council should disclose peculiary and non peculiary interests in any items on this agenda. Item three, recorded votes as permanent number 262, 2021 to 22, to consider which items on the agenda will have a recorded vote.
Madam Chair, do you want to record those? They're requested.
Thank you. Item four, town council meetings to approve the respective minutes of the council meeting held on 1st December 2022 are the extraordinary council meeting held on the 18th of January 2023. Got second there? Yeah, all in favour? Item five, committees and subcommittees, to adopt the minutes of committees and their respective subcommittees as follows, so we'll do them all together and we'll get them all. Leisure and recreation, 5th of January 2023, finance, 12th of January 2023, policy and planning, 12th of January 2023. We have a mover? Second there, all in favour? Item six, accounts for payments, to confirm the payments of accounts as approved at the finance committee meeting held on 12th of January 2023. All in favour? Item seven, correspondence, the town clerk to report on the correspondence in respect of the following. A, a letter from the British Legion, Paul Young Fellowship, thanking the council for its recent grant donation.
Again, it says, I am writing to thank you for your generous donation to our organisation. This is our 70th year and we are planning many things for our members. Your donation will help to provide transport to get members to these events. Again, on behalf of the members, I thank you.
Thank you, Alan. It's nice to get a letter of thanks. Item B, a letter from Kingsmeadow Academy, thanking the council for its Christmas grant donation.
Yes, from the head, from, on behalf of all of our staff and children here at Kingsmeadow Academy, we would like to thank you for your kind donation to assist us with our Christmas celebrations. Your contribution is greatly appreciated and will go towards our festive events in school, including our Christmas disco and gifts for our children.
See, a letter from two parishioners regarding the conduct of a councillor.
Yeah, Madam Chair, it's in respect of councillor Kenyon, but it's up to him whether he wants to speak or not. If he went into detail, it would have to go into a solution.
Well, we're going to exclusion then. Item A, community grants and/or assistance, to consider the following. A, a request from the Hemsworth Food Pantry to use Hemsworth Community Centre to assist with food parcels provision during the February half term holiday.
Yeah, as it said by the chair, from the Food Pantry, they'd like to do the February school holidays to support families with children. They make up school holiday food support parcels to leave at the centre and this would give families access to them any time they were open that week. With the council's approval, we also recommend approval by Madam Chair.
Yeah, Ian.
Regarding this, are they going to be cooking anything?
No, not this time.
It's not cooking? That's fine, it's just that that cooker wants to check in.
It's a tin for the package.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a new one for that.
Well, that's for another discussion, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think we're all in agreeance to that. So, yeah, do we all approve that? Yeah. Anybody against it? B, a request from Little Stars Playgroup for a banner to publicise their activities at the Fitzwilliam Centre.
Can I just cancel that because I've already got one now? So I was talking about that, absolutely forgot that one.
Right, that's just been cancelled. C, a request from Royal Zars Veterans Group for a banner to publicise their activities at the Fitzwilliam Centre. I think it's what it says, isn't it? So do we approve a banner?
Yeah.
For Zars, are we all in favour? Item nine, remembrance, to consider the purchase of two unknown soldiers' mobile status respectively for Kingsley and Fitzwilliam and to seek permission from the British Legion to revamp the benches at the Hemsworth Memorial.
This, well, this is from some parishioners in Kingsley, they wanted one to know if they could have one to revamp their memorial and one of Fitzwilliam.
Yeah, I mean, I'm in favour, can we do it in house?
The £175 each, Madam Chair, so £315.
Oh, that's nothing.
Yeah, I think we're all in agreeance with that.
Of course we are, yeah, that's actually something, isn't it?
Item 10, budget and preset, 2023, sorry.
Are we going to ask the British Legion?
Yes, I'd do that, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Item 10, budget and preset, 2023 to 2024, to receive the recommendations of the finance committee and to determine the budget and the accord and, and the according preset for the year commencing 1st of April 2023 and to authorize the town clerk to issue a formal request to Hemsworth, to Wakefield Council.
Can I propose a move then?
Chair, can I just go in?
Sorry, I propose a move then.
Just a minute. Yeah, we'll go to that in a minute.
No, we propose something different then. If you're going to start going over them numbers again, we're going to be here all night.
We won't be here all night.
We will, if you carry on like that.
Can we just, can we just come to order?
Chair.
As soon as I mentioned it, put his hand up when you mentioned it, Donna, I'm going to councillor Kenyon.
I'd just like to state, you know, to members that if we get the ice cream tender back in again, it's been offered to certain figure that, that covers more than half of what we need.
Councillor Kenyon, you shouldn't talk about that.
No.
I apologise, but we've also got us.
We're not to order.
You're not to order there.
Just a minute, can we, can we refrain from mentioning that?
It's hard to order. I apologise for that.
Can we just come to order?
Yeah, so the next one is, we have a balance.
Is there any part to anybody putting their hand up?
Just let me finish and then you can have your say. And then we've got a balance from last financial year to carry forward, which is more than the deficit that they're talking about.
And what about next year?
Right, just a minute, Donna, just a minute, we're going to finish what you're saying.
Nonsense.
Sorry.
We've got, we've got the money from last year, from this financial year's balances to keep us going on what's been put forward, that's all I'm saying.
Shy, Maxine.
Do you know, we go over this, it's going round and round in circles with this. We've explained to everybody exactly what we have got left. We, this, this money is getting spent. How many times have I spent it? I mean, I just don't understand where it's, where it's coming from, all this money, but we, we have not got money to spend on what he's asking, so.
We talked about it at meeting, the last, the last thing we wanted to do was put the preset up. We didn't want to do it, but the thousands and thousands of pounds that have been spent over the last four years means we have to do it, otherwise we're going to be handing over to the next council and it won't be our problem. We've got to hand it over in a decent state. That's all I want to say.
When that was over, you had £31,000 more in budgets than when the last election was in 2019, so work that out for yourself.
But when, when, when.
If you shout out again, you're going to be excluded from meeting job because you're doing it regularly.
I'll just say, I'll stand by that budget. I'll stand by what has been spent over the last 12 months. There's been some things that we've questioned, but the ongoing spending over the last three years, £180,000 in the first year that, that you were brought in on the water park.
Yeah, well, just let me.
And you've doubled what?
Just a minute, we've also done improvements to water back as well.
But then you're doing it again, but then you're doing it again.
Yeah.
You're asking us for a new fridge and a new bucket.
With respect, Donna, they've been wanting to do it for a lot of years.
Do I not get to finish my sentences?
A lot of years.
Better finish first, Jay.
No, just a minute, right.
We're talking about how much money has been spent, how much has been spent on legal fees. It has gone on and on and on and Alan has budgeted it for it. It works out just over £4 per household extra.
For band days.
For band days, less for other bands. We don't want to do it, but I think it's unsensible.
More for other bands, band days are those.
Well, more for other bands, I'm sorry. But I propose a move then. Does anyone want to second me?
I'll second you.
All in favour?
Well, I'm against that.
Well, that's when you put your hand up when she says again.
Just a minute, just a minute. So we'll, we'll do the four first and then against.
It's late, isn't it? It gets harder and worse now.
We just, we just need to.
Don't want to do it.
One, two, three, four, five, six. What's, what's, what's?
Right, against.
No question that.
Seven, six.
Seven, six, in favour?
Right, that's carried. Item 11, West Yorkshire Pension Fund, autoculture assessment, town clerk to report accordingly.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The pension funds did their assessment and from that call there needs to be a half a percent increase in the contribution from the councillor's employer. I factor that into budgeting, Madam Chair, so recommend approval.
No, I think we're all in agreeance with that, so, yeah. Item 12, casual vacancy co-option, further to minute number 271, 22, 23, to consider co-option to the casual vacancy number to South Ward.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There are only two candidates, so it can, if members wish to go straight to a vote, there's, there's Miss Malton and Mr Bates. So if it was more than two, it would be trickier, but an absolute majority is needed, but with two candidates, that will happen.
Right, so the councillors want to go straight to the vote? Right, so we'll start, so we'll do obviously.
I'm reading out the statements.
Yeah. Sorry.
Read the statements out for everybody.
Well, you've had the statements, we've had the statements.
No, it's not an interview.
Yeah. So we've had the statements, do you want the statements reading out again or do you want to go straight to the vote?
Straight to a vote.
Right, so we'll go straight to the vote, so we'll vote for, vote on Lyn Martin, all in favour? So.
Councillor, councillor.
Right, so then we'll vote for Mr Bates.
Why, can I ask, why councillor Kenyon telling people how to vote please?
Can we just have a bit of order, please? Can we have that vote again, please? Can we have that vote again, please?
Now, the Kenyans telling me where to vote.
Yeah, just like councillor Westonford has to. Yeah, but, but, it's against anyway, so.
You'll be against somebody if that didn't.
Right, do you want to, quiet, Anna, do you want to leave room? Can you? Can you move to order? Right, I'm going to take a vote to remove you if you keep on.
Why else can I move you? I just want to be big enough to move me.
Right, so that's seven, six for Lyn Martin. Yeah. Welcome, Lyn. Item, item 13.
Madam Chair, so she signs up, she's a councillor then.
Oh, sorry, I don't apologise for that. Right, so Lyn, you're welcome to sit, obviously, I know you're recording.
Yeah, I've got a problem that I'm trying to fix, you want to stay here?
Well, yeah, so any time you want to come to inter-meeting, you can do. Item 13, use of the code of conduct process, the town clerk to report on correspondence from Wakefield Council's monitoring office in respect of the use of the code of conduct process.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and yes, the monitoring officer, Emma Wollinschaw, wrote to the council in December to explain that she thought that any internal disputes at the town council should resolve internally. And she also said that any future referrals to her will be assessed on various criteria. I'll read the page verbatim, Madam Chair, because it's important. Within the Wakefield arrangements, the following presumptions will apply, that's in respect of any referrals to the M O. There will be a working assumption that details of the allegations made against a councillor should not be made public until the end of the process and only if there is an investigation. There will be recognition from the outset of any complaint that the actions that can be recommended at the end of any process must be proportionate to the need to ensure effective administration of the council, the welfare of its staff or the reputation of the council. There will be an overriding presumption that complaints should be settled quickly, efficiently and informally and in a way that represents value for money and takes into account the limited action that can be taken against a councillor. The latter two aspects are highly relevant when considering the source of complaints being presented regarding Hemsworth councillors. Turning now to the assessment criteria, which I must apply to complaints, I note the following relevant aspects. Triviality. Is the complaint too trivial to warrant further action? If the answer is yes, the M O may decide the matter does not warrant further investigation. Prior investigation or prior action. Has the complaint already been subject of an investigation or other action relating to the code of conduct? Similarly, has the complaint been the subject of an investigation by other regulatory authorities? If the answer is yes, the M O may decide the matter does not warrant further investigation. And lastly, underlying motivation. Does the complaint appear to be simply malicious, vexatious, politically, sorry, politically motivated or tit for tat? If the answer is yes, the M O may decide the matter does not warrant further investigation.
Thank you, Alan. We'll move to item 14, review, review of committee membership, to review the membership of the council's standing committees. Councillor.
Was this just to check if everybody wants to stay on the committees? I think it might have been. Because the committee meetings, we're not getting full attendance, so is it that?
Just how it's been put on here, I just confused.
Can we defer if you want, councillor?
Would you like to defer it till next committee?
No, just say what it's, yeah, we'll defer it.
I would defer that, until next town council meeting. Item 15.
Have we just got a minute?
No, I don't know, I've just heard it, it's okay.
Right, item 15, standing committee grievances and disciplinary matters, to consider establishing a standing committee to deal with grievances and disciplinary matters.
Yeah, one of the practical problems, Madam Chair, is if a panel has been appointed, we have to wait until the next council meeting to appoint it, so on a six week cycle, if it's just Mr Council meeting, that's the best part, six weeks before a panel can start to investigate a case. So it makes sense to have a standing committee. The committee must always be at least three, but practically you want at least five or six names in case some people can't make it all onto a panel. So basically, I need five or six, possibly more volunteers, Madam Chair. So, so, Madam Chair, that's, that's assuming the council wants to do this, I'm actually just saying that.
Maxine.
Can't we just do this like within HR company? Because our problems we've been getting with these, these grievance committees.
The, the HR companies, the council gets into the investigation, they then provide the reporting recommendations and it needs a panel to consider them.
Oh, so we'll still use choices and?
Yes, sorry, I was investigating, so I should have clarified, yeah. The council can still appoint an external investigator person to investigate recommendations, but it still needs a panel to hear the case.
Yes, I'll adopt that until May.
I'll say that.
Yeah. Are we all in favour?
Madam Chair, need some names. Nice and bold, please. Sorry.
Drop the vote when it first and then give you some names.
Yes, part same vote, really, isn't it?
It might be, in May you said, didn't you?
As I understand it, you can nominate some five or six councillors and this will be in place until May.
Sorry, until May, sorry, I misheard you there, Alan.
About what we're stood on.
Yeah, yeah, so we want five people. So we've got Donna, we've got Ian, we've got Anne, we've got Maxine. And Alan. Committee meetings venue, to consider holding committee meetings in the main hall at Hemsworth Community Centre. I think this is basically to have the council meetings in this room, all the meetings in this room. The only thing is, are we going to hold Thursday then, where we can't have any other events or anything that comes up? We have got the council chamber upstairs.
Can I comment, please?
Yeah.
So, Barrett, so I put this one forward, the room upstairs, we've had incidents up there and you're, you're boxed in, if anything happens, the room has won't got one exit. Speaking to, getting advice on this, we should have, we should have at least two exits.
Public safety.
Public safety, that's the way I'm looking for it, thank you. I think it should be down here, so I propose to have it down here.
Yeah, I can do it, but for that, I'll change.
Yeah, well, it makes sense, it's public safety, yeah, I'm in favour. Anybody? Everybody? Yeah. I'm in favour. Item 17, events panel, to consider any recommendations from the events panel.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the report from the events panel has circulated with the recommendations. I know councillor, if she wants to speak to it as well.
Basically, mostly it will, it stays relatively same, there's just a few things we've added to it and hopefully we could get past to spread more for, for people for different ages. It's, it's, but it's relatively same, apart from there's a few new things like scarecrow festivals, what we want to bring into it for, for everybody. I mean, Alan has put, or we've put into it and she's, it would have, it would have been a meeting, I think, that we're doing.
So a couple of extra courses being suggested.
That's what I meant, for the pre-age group, see, that's been like the culture. Two, four families, well, a couple of old people and, you know what I mean, they're having all fired on to a large protest.
Can I second that?
One thing that was mentioned is, there's a lot, there was a lot of empty seats on the buses last year.
That's why.
So we're going to introduce a £5 deposit and on the day of the trip, we'll get that £5 back.
Yeah, I think that's a really good idea, because some people would have missed the opportunity for that when people did turn up. So, yeah, I'm 100% behind that. So are we all in favour of that then? Item 18, public question time, to receive questions from members of the public and to receive any reports from, from community meetings. If you could just put your hand up and give us your name. Yes, Julie?
My question's regarding, my question's regarding item 7C. Mr Draper, why is it going to move into exclusion, please?
If it was straightforward as councillor Kenyon wishing to apologise or say something, then that's public domain stuff. If it goes into detail, which could contain personal details, then that should be an exclusion.
Well, seeing as I'm one of the parishioners with the letter of complaint.
Right, sorry, Julie, we haven't.
No, I'm sorry, no!
Do we, do we need to shout out? Can't we just be ignored then?
It's my letter and I am insisting it is not moved for exclusion of public. That's my right.
Yes, it is, yeah.
Councillor Kenyon, are you or not going to act on the recommendation of your local town clerk about apologising for the breach of confidentiality of three parishioners' statements that another councillor sat on this side, a panel member, also breached? that another councillor sat on this side, a panel member, also breached? Councillor Hurst, you are being informed by the management office, you are being informed by your town clerk, you are being informed by the ICO. An apology is requested and was requested with two weeks' notice. If you've got nothing to say, why a town clerk? Run me up and ask on your behalf for a private meeting. This is a meeting and the public have a right to know about what you've been doing with breaching people's private statements. So I want a written and a public apology and so do these people that's been involved.
Well, I'll respond to that. Obviously, the town clerk knows all the legislation regarding these meetings and everything.
So do I.
Yeah, but I'm not going to have a problem, I'll answer you. You made a first complaint to management officer Wakefield about his breach of age protection, yeah? And the response from Wakefield, management officer Gillian Marshall, dated November two thousand and twenty-two, was, "As a result of these findings, it is felt that no further action is required and the complaint is therefore closed."
Correct, so that's why we were advised to go by the ICO.
Thank you, and I've got the letter here from the ICO.
So we've got all the recommendations from the ICO.
And I've got the letter here from the ICO. If you let me speak, please.
Thank you.
And the ICO's decision is as follows. "We have considered the information you have provided and we have decided that no further action by the ICO is necessary on this occasion."
Correct, well, we know the recommendations, Mr Draper. On the recommendations in the meeting held between you and Mr Pearce on the eleventh of January, we were all given a copy from the ICO of the eleven recommendations. You told me you discussed them with this council or the councillors. How many of you know about them? And that's why you've put it tonight on item twenty-one in exclusion of press. Do any of your councillors know about the ICO recommendations?
Yes, for sure, item.
So you discussed it on twenty-third of November? That's not that the original one was sent out, though?
Well, that's definitely what they're saying.
So I'll ask again, Mr Kenyon. You requested a private meeting, you wanted to meet last week, what's changed? Are you or not...
I'm going to give you the same answer what I'm giving you tonight.
So you're not giving an apology?
You made two complaints, one to the management officer and one to the ICO. And both departments have decided that on this occasion, there's no further action necessary.
So what about the email evidence that you breached our confidentiality? You discussed our statements?
Mrs Alton, you made a complaint to two departments.
Yes, Mr Kenyon.
Both departments have decided that there's no further action.
The evidence is there. You breached parishioners' confidentiality. One of your town councillors on the panel shared the email information with you about the complaint and you have breached our confidentiality.
The email...
Where is your apology?
The email that I received was not from this today. And once again, I'm referring you to the ICO's response.
We've got the ICO's call.
I'm referring you to the management officer's response. It's here, it's written down.
We are going to move on now. We are going to move on to the next question. Well, it is a public question time, I can come back to you after.
I'm sure they won't mind. So, okay, you read out your emails with the background recommendations. Would councillor Kenyon like to make an apology on moral grounds as opposed to legal grounds?
They made a complaint to management officer. The management officer wrote us a complaint and the ICO has dropped the complaint. I would have told you the same thing in a private meeting.
We're going to move on now. We're going to move on to next question.
Some porridge.
So, um... There's no need for comments like that.
Oh, well, there's no need for you being like you.
I am not getting into that, right, yes, Catherine.
To do with you. Right, obviously, something on social media that is very concerning. I would have hoped that councillor Shaun Middleton would have been here to obviously have some input on in this. Obviously, he isn't. So what I want to know is, Mr Draper, have you done due diligence regarding the Christmas float? Because it has come to parishioners' attention that a float was driving round the village...
Like, did you see it moving?
No!
Pies the borders! Pies the borders! Pies the borders!
The police have been...
Go on now, pies the borders!
It's up to the police now, so I'm not going to talk about it.
I am asking, I'm not asking...
If you tell us about the border, I'm going to stop the public question time.
Okay, so we will not discuss the due diligence.
Can you be quiet, please?
We will not discuss the due diligence that should have been carried out regarding the Christmas float, because it would appear if the police have been informed, it wasn't carried out. So my next question...
Can I just, just a minute? It was reported to the police.
Right, so my next, so my next question is, it has been on the agenda regarding an incident on bonfire night. Now, again, a parishioner wrote in to Mr Draper. And can you actually look at Mr, me, Mr Draper, when I'm speaking to you?
Just take your notes, Catherine.
I can't take notes, I'm looking at the same time, Catherine, I'm afraid, but I'll try.
So, a parishioner asked whether when Mr Matt Wilbley provided the pallets and helped build the bonfire, was his insurance checked? Your response to that parishioner was for them to actually go and ask him. Well, I am asking you, did you see his insurance? And did you make sure that every risk assessment was... Was it you, Tom?
Yeah, two answers, yes, and secondly, the person that asked, what was the person's name?
No.
She didn't ask whether there was insurance in place. She asked to see a copy of his insurance certificate. So that would have breached his data protection. Well, it would be, like, it would be.
Right, can you, can you be quiet and stop mentioning councillors' names?
And my other question is on behalf of someone else.
Cathy, you've had two questions.
That's why I just said it's not on behalf of me.
Well, then, then it took, then it took two answers. You've had two questions, if we're going to move on. Look, we're moving on.
In the case of Lee, can you ask about the notice boards, please?
Oh, right, yes.
Do you have to bring it out for you?
No, I actually asked Lee whether she could, she could mention it.
Can you use the microphone, then, please?
Can you hear me anyway, if I just speak up?
Yeah, I can hear you, yeah.
Can everybody hear me at the back? A parishioner wanted to know what was happening with the notice boards that we've been promised. And I know, but we've seen one go up at the lakeside, which apparently isn't one of the two that we're expecting. Do we have an update on them and is the price that we've been quoted the correct price, the two grand or whatever it is?
Yeah, so there's, does the two notice boards that are on the way, and this issue about the other potential notice boards? The two notice boards?
Can, can you be quiet while he's trying to explain, please?
The two notice boards, I chased up the firm last week, they should be in the next couple of weeks. They were built and they were doing the lettering set, so that should be a matter of a couple of weeks. The request to...
Right, I'm, I'm just, be quiet, he's trying to explain.
The request to Wakefield to put notice boards on their land, which is separate to those two, a complaint's now been submitted via the district councils about that, because I was getting nowhere with them. So a complaint's been submitted to Wakefield via the ward councils.
Right, so that ends the public question time. So it's number nineteen, item nineteen, exclusion of press of public, members of the public are pressed to be excluded from, for the consideration of business confidentiality nature as per the public bodies' admission to Meetings Act nineteen sixty. So, good evening. Now, we've finished the meeting here.
Who are you?
Me, I'm called Gavin.
It's nobody's business.
You know who I am.
It's nobody's business.
We don't know.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Take care.